Let's get this meeting going. I'd like to invite everyone to stand for the pledge of the flag, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, in the name of justice, law, Okay, thank you. All right, we're gonna do our May 27 meeting, 2020. We're gonna call the meeting to order. Do we have approval of the minutes of May 13?
Commissioner Given second. Earl Pine, so move.
Okay, so we had a motion and a second. Any discussion on the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Financial report and payment of bills. Do we have a motion to approve the financial report?
So move.
We got a motion by Commissioner Givens, a second by Gene Brumel. Do we have any discussion on the financial report? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, it is 12:02. At 12:05, we're gonna have the public hearing. Lou, do you want to move forward with the town administrator's report on ordinance 2-2020 before we get into the public hearing?
That's, I can do that pretty quickly. Ordinance 2, 2020 is presented for adoption by the board today. This amends the police pension plan under chapter 2.28 of the town code. The purpose of this is to provide officers a second option. Currently, the option for retirement is 25 years of service at a retirement benefit of 50%. This option will provide for an early retirement, as early as 20 years, and between 20 and 25 years is a 2% increment on retirement benefits. So if an officer chooses early retirement at 20 years of service, he can get 40% of his average, three-year average compensation. If he chooses 32, 22 years, 24 years, whatever, up to 25, it's 2% per year. This was introduced at the last meeting and is presented for adoption tonight and I, or today, and I recommend that the board adopt ordinance 2, 2020, amending the police pension plan.
Do we have a motion to approve ordinance 2-2020, police pension program?
Yeah, Commissioner Givens, so move.
We have a motion.
Commissioner Brumel, second.
Perfect. Any discussion on the pension program?
Yes, I have a question. Louis said that the 20-year program will give you 40% and on a three-year average. What would be the average on the 25?
25 is 50% of the retirement benefit, and it's 2% per year. So at 20 years, it's 40%, 42% for 21 years, on up to 25 years, at 50% of the average retirement compensation.
Okay, I'm good.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, it is 12:05. This is a public hearing on the constant yield tax rate. Steve, do you need to introduce anything for this, or Louis?
Well, it was introduced at the last meeting, I know. I don't know what to add to that.
Okay, so we introduced the constant yield tax rate at the last meeting for introduction purposes only. Today is a public hearing on our constant yield tax rate. We are gonna have our tax rate at .6356. This is a public hearing, so if you have any comments and you'd like to make a comment in regards to the constant yield tax rate for the town of Elton, I guess raise your hand and we'll introduce, or I can look at the screen, and I'm gonna ask you if you have any comments. If you have any comments, please state them at that point. So I have a phone number of 410-821-7900. Do you have any comments? I have a cell phone number of 443-350-9415. You have any? No comments. Okay, does any of the board have any comments on the constant yield tax rate?
None.
None. Okay, seeing, seeing none on the Zoom. This public hearing on the constant yield rate is closed at 12:07. I'd like to ask the board, do we have a motion to approve the constant yield tax rate?
Excuse me, you're not approving the constant yield tax rate, you're not accepting it. So the motion is, we'll accept the current tax rate, real property tax rate that town has that you mentioned, but we're not accepting the constant yield tax rate.
Gotcha. Lou, do we need to make that motion, or do we accept it during the adoption of the budget?
Actually, you do not have to accept or reject it. All you have to do is when you adopt your budget, which is the next step in the public hearing, you're gonna adopt it at the current tax rate.
Okay, so we don't need a motion at that point. So let's go right on to the next public hearing. It is 12:08. The town introduced fiscal year 2021 budget at our meeting on May 13. It was introduced. Today, we're gonna accept the budget, and I just wanted to give, remind everyone of a few of the highlights of the budget. We are proposing a tax rate of .6356. It's the same tax rate as fiscal year 20. We are proposing the exact same business personal property tax rate of $1.21, same tax rate as fiscal year 20. Our quarterly trash collection fee is gonna be $32.50, which is the same fee as fiscal year 20. Our salary adjustments, the Elton Police Department, several years ago, petitioned for collective bargaining, and during that collective, the town residents of the town of Elton voted in favor of collective bargaining, and this is our bargaining year. So the bottom line is, there's an increase in salary adjustments for the EPD sworn officers in this budget for 5.4% total increase, and also for any non-police employees, we're gonna add a 5.4 salary adjustment effective July 1, 2020. Also in this budget, we're gonna fill the vacant position for one planner. We found that the projected healthcare insurance increase will be as 0% during this fiscal budget. We also have projected that we are gonna have a 20% revenue decrease in this fiscal year budget, and that's based on our shared income tax from the motel tax, the admissions and amusement tax, and this is a direct decrease in result of the COVID-19 virus. We're also gonna continue to support our Main Street program with $100,000 grant. In this also is the proposed Armory Acquisition. We also will be finishing up the Neighborhood Community Center. The new debt service that we're gonna be accepting in this budget will be $140,000, take or minus a few dollars on capital equipment that was purchased during the last two previous fiscal years. And those are the highlights of the general fund. I just also wanted to mention the Water and Sewer Fund real quickly. There will be no increase in our water, water rate and no increase in our sewer rate. And I continue to state that the town of Elton has one of the lowest water and sewer rates in the state of Maryland, which is something that we need to be very, very proud of. And sometimes I think we take that for granted, but we have great rates in the town of Elton. With that, does the board have any comments in regards to the budget itself?
I had one question. Go ahead.
No, no, you first, Mr. Given.
Oh gee. Rob, was there a dollar figure for the planner? It's not something that necessary, but it just hit my mind.
We did not put a, well, to answer your question, yes, I'm sure there is a number that we're using. Do we know that, Gene Minter? Are you still on the phone? Can you tell us what that amount is?
Renee told me what the range was, but I can't, I don't know exactly what the range was, but it's.
That's fine. I was just asking.
Depending on qualifications.
Yeah, I think it was 60 to 85. Does that sound about right?
No, it was not. Unless you were getting benefits with that, but no.
Yeah, that's, well, of course I am.
Maybe.
Yeah, I think it, I think it was like a 40 to 60, but then you pretty much double it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, this is a public hearing in regards to Town of Elton's fiscal year 21 budget. Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna look at the screen. There's a phone number from 398-1011. Do you have some comments in regards to this year's budget?
Guess who that is, Rob?
It sounds like Mr. Lemon.
Yeah.
Mr. Lemon?
That's me, and I want to thank you very much for giving me a copy of the budget. And I've looked at it, and obviously, a lot of work has gone into the budget. What I don't, I don't fully, I don't understand what's going on with the community center, and maybe you can explain it to me. This year, we're borrowing $500,000 from the sewer fund. Last year, we borrowed 31, 3,100,000 from the sewer fund. Now that, what's happened to that money? It's used for the purchase of the building, but I don't see, see it anywhere in the budget anymore.
Steve, can you explain that to Mr. Lemon?
The 500,000 is just our estimate in what the expenses will be to finish up the project in the upcoming fiscal year. Yeah, we haven't fully paid for it. It's not open yet, hasn't been fully paid for. So that is our estimate of what the remaining costs will be charged.
The $3,100, 3,100. That was in last year's budget, it's not in this year's budget. And, you know, this year, the, the fund, the sewer fund is a lower number. So what, has that been paid back, or how's that work?
It's not been paid back yet. We will be transferring the money once we get to the bottom line, but remember, there was a resolution passed last week that we're going to use more, 500,000 more from the sewer fund that had been earmarking as being committed in the general fund for. So we removed that commitment and made that available for other expenditures in the general fund, but we increased the amount to be transferred from the sewer fund to complete the project, along with $800,000 community development block grant we got for it.
As I look at the, as the budget, I don't see this $3 million anymore in the new budget.
That's correct, this is in the current year.
Well, I mean, that has to be accounted for somewhere.
Yeah, there is a resolution also that there is a loan from the sewer fund and that full amount to be repaid starting fiscal year 2022. That was resolution passed at the last meeting.
So the money is still, still borrowed from the sewer?
That's correct. There's no budgeted repayment in FY21 from the general fund to the sewer fund for the purpose of the community center. That's correct.
In this, in this year's budget, there's no plans to repay any of that? That would be, that would be in future budgets?
That's correct. That resolution very clearly stated there would not be any repayment in the upcoming year, but it would be starting fiscal year 2022.
Okay.
That actually a 1% interest.
All right, so I guess I understand that. I didn't understand it before. The Water and Sewer Fund, the, that's managed by Dan, right? As far as expenses?
Well, InfraMark is one who operates our Water and Sewer Collection and Distribution System. Dan, Dan Hamon is the Director of Public Works.
Well, I mean, there's, there's employees there, and they, and if you, you know, if you, like, if you fail to, you have to check out this utility or whatever you have to do, those employees, they report to Dan, don't they?
That'll be correct.
Okay, that's, I'm just trying to understand. I want to talk, well, thank you for that. That's very good.
Thank you.
The, I'll just make a quick comment. The, you show more highway gas tax and state shared income in this year's budget versus last year. I have a feeling that's not gonna happen. As you all know, the governor said he's coming, he's, he's running short of funds because of the virus, and, and the other thing is, you don't have the traffic on 95, at least at this point, that you did in prior years. So just a comment.
Thank you.
I guess you wait, wait and see what happens. Want to talk about, let me see, what else I have here?
I want to make a comment. Mr. Lemon, can I make a comment? The highway user revenue is exclusively used for road construction, reconstruction purposes only. We don't use it for other general fund operating expenses, only for roads and road work.
Okay. I look, looking at the finance department, you have financial software this year at $75,000. Last year, you had it at $75,000. Is that upgrading the software in the department? Is that what we're doing?
Yes, we're in a, we have a system that works very well, but we know it's quite dated, and we are, we have budget in the current year to look at a new system, looking up to a new system. We're not certain we'll be able to get to that this fiscal year, so we have a budget to get to next year. So if it's done spent this year, it will be available for next year. We don't anticipate being able to get to it this year.
So you would carry the money forward and then spend it next year?
That, that's correct. It's the same thing budget. It's not an additional 75. It's the same 75, because we have not yet purchased a new accounting system.
Oh, it's the same, okay, all right. Where do we, where do we stand on your, your water project, the $19,000 that you spent?
You mean for the new meters?
Yes, so they were gonna, gonna set it up so that you'd be able to record it in the office and different things that they were gonna do.
The AMI system, wait a minute, Steve, the AMI system's on hold right now because of the coded COVID health threat to employees and to the public. So that's on a hold, situation right now.
Okay. Okay. I got it. The, I wanted to talk about, I'd like to talk about the Parks and Recreation a little bit. The, the budget for Parks and Recreation is essentially the same budget that you had last year with salary increases. And I would, I'm assuming that you, will you be able, you won't be able to have a summer camp this year?
We don't know yet.
No, I would jump in. I told Mary we're not gonna have a camp. Since COVID has no vaccine or effective treatment, we're not, not gonna gather children together or anyone else together in there and expose them to the potential COVID virus.
So, in effect, what you're, you're doing and saying is that, that the new center won't be open this year, 2020, or until, until a vaccine is developed?
We don't plan to open the Rec Center until we have adequate vaccines and, or to prevent COVID because of the potential threat from that health virus. And I don't believe that the governor is gonna waive social gatherings in a, in a format that we can have large numbers of people in that facility right now. We don't know. We don't have any more information about when all this is gonna happen than the federal government does.
And I think, you know, everything you said, I, I think that's good. I agree with all that. The, but, so the Parks and Recreation budget, based on the numbers in that, will actually probably be a pickup this fiscal year, because you're not gonna be spending the money on summer camp and some of those other activities. Would you agree with that?
I would.
Money budgeted for the Parks and Rec, for the salaries for Mary and Chaney, probably won't have any other personnel over there for a short period of time, or a period of time, let's put it that way. And of course, there's operating costs in terms of electricity, AC, you know, HVAC systems and lighting and things like that, but we don't anticipate those expenses to be great. So until we know what's gonna happen with this virus, we're kinda in a hold pattern.
Well, I say, I don't see any, and I think I understand where you're coming from, I don't see any pro forma budget for operating the new community center. That's not, that's not shown in your current budget, and it's not available at this time. Is there gonna be a pro forma? What happens if you, let's say, everybody gets lucky and they have the virus, problem solved, the first part, next day, they have the shot for it. And you, and you opened up the community center. How would you handle it? That's not in your budget.
We'll amend the budget at that time.
And I have to tell you, Mr. Lemon, we're ready for that. There's, there's been a lot of work given for pro forma on the Parks and Rec side, but it wasn't something we wanted to introduce into this budget based on where we're at today. But I'd be more than happy to amend the budget if we move forward in a positive way. I think we all want to be back in a positive way.
Okay. All right. I brought this up at the last meeting, and I think, I think, but this is Parks and Recreation again. You have Mary and her assistant, and I'm just wondering if there's any, if some of these government funds are available to cover them. I brought up PPP last time, and that may not apply to municipal governments. I'm not sure. But it would seem, a suggestion I would have is that maybe Jeannie could check out all these programs that are coming out of the federal government and see if the town can avail themselves of some, particularly with thinking of Parks and Recreation, that maybe, that maybe you can cover, cover the salaries there and things with some of the funds that are coming up. Just a suggestion.
Thank you.
The, see what else I have.
Hey, Earl, can I get you to mute your phone, Earl?
Oh, I have muted?
Yep, mute your phone if you can.
I'm sorry.
The, other, other things, you know, I have my usual questions about the police department, but I'm gonna skip that pretty much. I think we should be updating the cars, or have we gone, have we started for the new positions yet, or looking for people?
No, we haven't.
Because that's, that's a long, long process and difficult. It would seem to me that we should be starting.
Thank you.
I'm trying to mute it, Rob.
Pardon?
I'm trying to mute this.
Okay.
I'm probably gonna get off the line.
The, where you're probably gonna get a pickup in your budget is that the fuel, your fuel costs are the same, this projected for this coming year as they were last year, and the cost of fuel at this, at least at this point, is down substantially.
Yep.
From what it used to be, so that may be a good pickup for you. I'm not, I think it'll still be down next year. I see your debt service is down. That's a very positive thing. And I see major facility fund, your special assessments have dropped from $100,000 to $50,000. Is that because you can't get the people to pay?
That's the reflection of the amount of new construction going on in town. Things are fairly stagnant. I know there's been a waiving of residential new construction of the major facility fees, but it still applies to commercial construction.
Okay. I'm done.
Thank you, Mr. Lemon, for all those comments. You certainly, we really appreciate your input on our town budget every year. Really does mean a lot to us. Thank you.
Well, it looks, I think you've, you've all spent a lot of time on it, and you're, you have objectives that you're trying to accomplish, and you figured out how to do that, and so you're to be complimented on, you know, getting it all put together and working with it, and so, and there's a lot more interest in the budget and what's going on than, than there was, let's say, six or seven years ago.
Yep. Thank you.
That's a very positive thing.
Okay, do we have anyone else? There's an iPhone listed, just says iPhone. Do you have any comments about our fiscal year budget?
No.
Okay, we, okay, no, was the iPhone. And we also have the last four digits, 9415. Anything about our budget? Does anyone from the board have anything to state about the budget? Hearing none, this public hearing is closed. It is now 12:30. The public hearing on the fiscal year 2021 budget is closed. Do we have a motion to accept fiscal year 2021 budget?
So move.
That's a move.
We have a.
Commissioner Givens?
A motion and a second. Do we have any discussion about the budget? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Budget fiscal 2020, 2021 has been approved, and guys, I can assure you that we're gonna have a lot of budget amendments along the way with this one.
I can believe that.
Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda is the administration resolution, A2 2020. Lou, do you want to say something about that?
Yeah, I'll comment on it. The, the resolution A2, 2020 is presented for introduction today, introduction, not adoption. And it involves two parcels, one at 411 Maloney Road and one at 732 East Plasky Highway. The petition for these two parcels was accepted by the board at the last meeting. And the, these two parcels, one, the first one at 411 Maloney Road's improved property, and it has 1.446 acres. And the second property, 732, is .592 acres, and it just, it has some improvements. It's at a coffee shop, but I don't believe that it's been in operation for a while. And I think the intent of the two parties that own these parcels is to sell the, sell as a combined lot, and then I think there's a commercial interest in developing on those two things. Consequently, they're asking for C2 zoning for that property, which is consistent with our zoning along Route 40. I don't think there'll be any changes to the zoning. So I think we have representation from the owners here. David Plot, if you want to make some comments?
Yes, David Plot, I'm the attorney for the, and got to speak on May thirteenth. Appreciate the, Mr. George and, and the opportunity. We, you did a very good summary of what's being requested. I do have with me Tim Horner, who is the contract purchaser and he would be combining the property. And then under this zoning, wanting to develop them, I think we mentioned before with the seven eleven, Mr., along with Mr. Horner is Phil Hager is a project consultant is also available. And Eric McWilliams, who's a project engineer and provided the survey descriptions, I believe, for all this morning. So, we just appreciate the, to approve, introduce, eventually approve it so we can go forward with this project. So thank you.
Thank you. I think it's a pretty open and shut case with this introduction for annexation. It's the Fox Hollow Coffee Shop and also the Old Motel that's there on the corner. Does anyone from the board have any questions or comments? We're just doing this for introduction purposes today?
Yeah.
No, sir.
Already zoned to C two?
Yes.
Well, it's a highway, it's the county's version of C two.
I think it's Business General, if I'm not mistaken. Is that correct, David?
That, that's correct. It's currently zoned under the county code as BG, which is a Business General District. That district allows a variety of commercial uses, like stations, banks. That's very similar to those zoning that's being required.
I want to make a comment, Mayor, if I could.
Yes.
There's a public hearing for this annexation before it's adopted. The public hearing scheduled for July fifteenth at twelve oh five PM, July fifteenth. Pursuant to law, we advertise this public hearing on June tenth and June seventeenth. It'll be advertised in the Cecil Wig and also on our website. At that time, on the July fifteenth public hearing, people will be allowed to comment on the annexation, but the comments have to be delayed until that period of time. That's when we have official public hearing on it.
Very good. Do we have a motion to accept the annexation resolution A two two thousand twenty presented for introduction purposes?
That's a move, Commissioner Givens.
Second by Gene Brumal. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries and Commissioner Piner is offline. So it was four zero for introduction. And once again, as Louis George stated, this will be advertised and we'll have a public hearing on July fifteenth. And then we'll have the ability to have the public comment on this annexation. And then we'll move for approval or denial. Thank you so much, guys.
Thank you very much.
Just as a matter of information, on the fifteenth, as the public hearing, as the mayor commented, it can be accepted or adopted or rejected. In the event that it's adopted, it'll become effective forty-five days after that adoption date unless there's a referendum. And in my thirty years here, I've never seen a referendum on an annexation. So I don't believe this, this small two parcels are going to be effective then, I mean affected by a referendum. So forty-five days after the, the public hearing on July fifteenth, this annexation theoretically will be in, in effect. It'll be in the town of Elkton at that time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Okay. Louis, do you have anything else to report on your?
No, I had the ordinance to two thousand twenty. The board accepted that for adoption. So that's the item I had today.
Okay, just a couple of quick things. I'm not sure if everyone noticed, but the Ollies in the Big Elk Mall will be doing their opening on June the seventeenth is when they're planning on having their, their opening. Wanted to congratulate the two thousand twenty seniors, not only from Elkton, but also from Bohemian Manor High School. Thank Dan Hanley for getting them up and his wife for making them. The banners look absolutely wonderful that they put on some of the poles. Also wanted to state that the, it was great to get the new lights up in Petto Park. Might be a while before we can get to use them, but I have to say that the, the illumination of those LED lights are phenomenal. And I think that the, the community is going to really appreciate them when they can really see them, see the people under the lights. It's better lighting. It's safer. Very pleased that we were able to get that done. With that, Commissioner Rob, do you have anything today?
Not a whole lot, but I spoke with Anne Marie from the Arts Council just before we started. They are going to go on with their June art show, which my son and I are the featured artists. I'm going to drop off some artwork here in the next couple of days. They're going to do it online. So I'm not, I mean, you may have to visit, if you're interested in looking, you'll have to visit the Arts Council's website to get the particulars.
Fantastic. Commissioner Gene?
I am good today. Thank you.
Commissioner Charlie?
Basically, unlike you, congratulations to the two thousand twenty classes, not only in Cecil County, but across the nation. And Elkton High School normally would have a senior awards night. Obviously, they have made adaptations. I don't know what they're going to do, but the two scholarships that the town extends to Elkton High School have been fulfilled. The awards committee evidently at Elkton High School and the guidance department got together and they will update us with the names and whatever pertinent information it is for us to know about the awards.
Fantastic. Steve Repo, I see that we, did we mail out the check to Singerly Fire Company for the Hunter?
Not yet. We just got that last week for them. We were waiting, waiting and got it much later than we normally do. And I think maybe they kind of forgot about. I sent them an email. So we did get the list of people that qualified for the blow sap payment. So that'll be coming out real soon.
Okay. And also the annual contribution from the town based on the charter for-
Right. We'll, we'll be doing that real soon, too.
Yeah, I saw-
Okay, I've just told them blow sap checks were, oh, the donation check is in this run. We like to do that at the very end of the year. That way we can incorporate any additions to the tax roll. So we want to give them as, you know, as accurate numbers possible on that. And that will be going out now.
In the mid hundred and thirty thousands and, you know, we're projecting even a little higher number next year for them. So it'd be-
That's correct, based on the total assessments from the state.
Okay, this is the time that we open up the floor. Does anyone has any comments? Telephone number that ends in nine, four, one, five. Do you have any comments? Good for the town of Elkton.
I have a question.
We'll try our best answer. Please state your name and address and we'll do our best answer.
Pat Opal, one thirty-seven Milestone Road, Elkton.
Go ahead, Pat. Tell us what you need.
This has to do with the Department of Parks and Rec and the Community Center. I know you said that you really didn't want to open those up until we had a vaccine available, which I totally agree with. But if someone signs up or wants to use the community center after there's a vaccine, are you going to require people to have a vaccine? I don't know if that's even legal, but I'm just kind of asking.
No, I, I think that what we're going to do with the community center is we're going to follow the governor's guidance on when we're able to open that community center up. We're, we're going to follow the state's, state verbatim. And, you know, if someone doesn't want a vaccine, they're not going to want a vaccine to have. We can't, we can't require someone to have a vaccine to go in a facility. But we will certainly, yeah, we certainly wouldn't do that. But we, we just would want to make sure that we're not putting people in a position to get sick. And that's what we're looking at. Thank you, Pat.
Okay.
Okay, we have, thank you. There's another iPhone. Anyone have anything to say on that iPhone?
No, DPW, no issues.
All right, very good. All right. Any, Mr. Lemon, did you have any last comments?
I have a couple. You, you, you mentioned the park. Is there any update on the pedestrian, pedestrian bridge Delaware Avenue?
You know, it was interesting. Lou and I were talking about that yesterday. He made a comment. We were, we had a person that's in the community was looking to try to get a bike, a bike lane placed on a state highway. And Lou kind of made a comment, my gosh, we haven't been able to get our bridge up. How are we going to even get a bike lane going? But you could probably answer it better. I know you send a lot of emails back and forth with state highways.
The, the midsummer two thousand twenty was a, was a date that I was given by the, the design people at S H A for when they reach a certain level of planning for it. So I don't see an end to the bridge because it hadn't got construction funding yet, but there's, they're working on it. At a glacial speed, of course.
Yes.
Okay. Well, just keep following up on it. That's all you can do.
Oh, I do. I do.
The, the other thing I wanted to ask is, I see that, you know, they're talking about building the warehouse on your, in your new project. And Earl made it very, I thought Earl made it very clear in the discussions that, that you had, that nothing was going to happen unless improvements were made to Route two thirteen. And that, that issue, the traffic and one thing or another came up in every meeting that was had. Is, is anything happening there with the state roads to increase capacity on, on two thirteen because of the, you know, anticipated amount, increase in traffic and whatever, over what's currently too much traffic?
Hey Gene, I'm going to ask Gene Minner to respond to that about the planning process and everything they have to go through as far as getting the approvals done.
With respect to the P U D, the traffic impact study that has, that's underway, essentially, I guess, close to completion. And depending on the impacts from the different types of land use, there are different areas of improvement on the state and county roads that will be required. So with respect to the warehousing, they'll be focusing on the impact from the logistics center and will address those when they go to construct the logistics center, which is the first phase of the P U D. So sort of, they're doing an overall traffic impact study, assess the impacts, including the impacts of two thirteen and forty intersection. But the improvements will be done incrementally based on the, as the different land uses come online.
Gene, the, the I parcel, that'll exit on the Route forty, not two thirteen, correct?
Correct.
The, the I parcel is the, Mr. Lemon, the section it has the logistics center onto it.
Okay.
Closest to Maloney Road.
Okay. Well, Gene, you know, there's a lot going on there. Maybe in future meetings, if, if, if you could, you could just update us on the progress being made, what it looks like, the studies and the different things that they're doing. Because if I heard anything in these meetings, it was a concern about the, the traffic.
That, that's actually a great point, Mr. Lemon, because I think, I'm, I'm pretty well in tune with it because I follow the planning commission meetings. But it probably would be good, Gene, if you give us an update with that project to the board, maybe as, as the meetings go.
Sure.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Lemon.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else have anything to say this evening or today, this afternoon?
I'd like to make one comment.
Yes, sir.
I think today at four o'clock, they're going to launch a couple astronauts up to the space station using a private company. And I think it's the first in the history of the United States that this has happened. It's always been a governmental asset thing. But now they're going to use, I think, SpaceX or not, that they're sending these astronauts up. So when I saw it on the news a couple of times, I thought that's really extraordinary that, that we're using a private contractor to do that. That's very unusual.
Yes, it is. It'll be interesting to see that. Thank you, Lou. Anyone else have anything?
Mayor, can I make a comment on that?
Go ahead, Pat.
What Lou just said? I've been having, I've had the news on all day long. The actual launch is supposed to go off at four forty-three. And right now, it's looking like a fifty-fifty shot that it's going to go off because of thunderstorms in the area.
Yeah, yeah, I heard that.
If anybody's interested in an update.
Thank you, Pat.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, it is twelve forty-seven. I'd like to say this meeting is going to be adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All righty.